... tonight is two items coming out of closed session. And there's approval of four minutes, the last twenty-seven, two thousand twelve, September eighteenth, two thousand twelve. And motion to approve those minutes as presented in the board's package tonight. Steve, have a second please.
Second.
Thank you. And call her open.
Carter, yes.
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Nusis?
Yes.
And Betsy, after you have your hand.
I know that all board members are here this evening with the exception of Lisa Weitzel.
Okay. Next item is approval of the agenda. You'll have a chance to look at the agenda and the motion to approve that agenda as presented in the board's package. I'll move. Thank you, Jennifer. And second, this is a second. Thank you. And all papers say aye. All right. The first item we have tonight is our budget hearing. And we will open that budget hearing now. And I will give you resolutions first, right? Resolution is whereas the Board of Education of Ball Chatham Community Unit School District Number Five, County of Sangin, State of Illinois, caused to be prepared to intend to form a budget, and the Secretary of this Board has made that the same conveniently available to the public inspection for at least thirty days prior to the final action thereafter. Whereas a public hearing was held as to such budget on the twenty-fourth of September two thousand twelve, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of said district as follows. Section one, that fiscal year of this school district be the same, I'm sorry, be and the same hearing is fixed and declared to be beginning July first, two thousand twelve, ending June thirtieth, two thousand thirteen. Section two, that the following budget containing an estimate of amounts available on each fund separately and of expenditures for each be and the same as hereby adopted as a budget of the school district of said fiscal year. And Patrick Murphy will go through the budget with us.
Thanks. What Betsy's going to put up here is a one-page document that outlines the same numbers you saw in the bigger presentation last month. This just puts everything into one sheet. So the first column is the FY twelve expenses. Those are still unaudited, so until we have audited numbers, that's what we're using there. The ending, the next column, the green column, is the fund balances where they ended June thirtieth, two thousand twelve. The first blue column, only blue column there, is the FY thirteen revenue projections. So this is the revenues we're anticipating for this fiscal year totaled there at the bottom. And then the middle column is our available resources. Again, these are all estimates. Moving across the sheet, we have our expenses, and then the projected fund balances for the end of FY thirteen. And a comparison there, it's an over and under ratio for you. All these numbers are identical to what you saw and heard in August with the exception of the Ed Fund on the expenses. That's down slightly. We were able to realize more specific data based on hires that had occurred that were coming in about the time we were preparing the draft proposal. And since then, we've been able to identify exactly what those are, where they're placed and stuff, so we were able to realize the exact amount of what we'd be spending on that. So we're able to, we would overestimate that to be conservative at the beginning, and then when we know exactly what they are, we could bring that more in alignment with what it really was. The operations and maintenance went up just a little bit, again, to allow for some expenses that could occur in that area. And then on the revenue side, a little more on the revenue for education fund, we're able to realize some additional revenue in grant funding that we didn't know about at the time in August. So we had those numbers to plug in there as well. And a slight, just a minimal increase again on the operation and maintenance to again help offset some of the revenue or the expenses that we'll see on there on that side. Positive is that the changes in those funds, we're able to reduce what was the proposed deficit spending that you saw in August. The proposed number was nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine. That was in the operating fund. And with the little slight revenue and a little decrease in expenses, we're able to realize now a deficit spending proposed for you of five hundred and fifty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars in the operating fund. Note, the general state aid loss, that's the exact amount that we are not going to receive this year due to the proportion from the general state aid that we are actually entitled to, and that is the eight hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirteen cents. And I just want to point out that had that been fully funded the way it was supposed to be, we actually would not have a deficit spending issue. Can't control that, but I just want to indicate how close we are to actually having a balanced budget.
Patrick?
Yeah.
On the debt service, it goes from one point four to one point three, sorry, four point three to four point seven.
Mm-hmm.
What's that additional?
Bonds.
So it's additional?
It's the bonds that we already have on the books as the payments increase for those over the years. They have, that's the objective we'll have to, that's already set that we've come out of the levy. What would actually occur to pay off those bonds?
And then the, on the fire prevention, it goes from the expenses go, they drop about seven hundred thousand dollars between fiscal year two thousand twelve and fiscal year two thousand thirteen?
We had planned life safety expenses last year, and thanks to Dave and the team that he worked with, they actually realized savings of over a million dollars on the projects that were budgeted for last year. So that's additional funds that we would now have available this year that we wouldn't have anticipated.
Okay.
And those are specific to health life safety expenses. So those are offset. That was money we had anticipated actually spending last year on those projects, and since they actually came in under budget. So we have additional funds that we can put towards additional life safety projects this year if we need to, or future years.
I got one last question. The fund balance for the debt service of two point four million, and then it's the exact same balance, I think, you know, one year later? Is there a reason why we keep a balance, a rolling two point four million in there?
Due to timeline of payments. We have payments that are actually due in the summer, and so we have to carry over money through June. So we're not paying off everything in that exact fiscal year. There's due to the timing of our, we have calendar years, fiscal years, and when payments do actually on those bonds. Because we would have sold them at different times. Cash flow.
That's all good.
If this budget, just another document that was on your, there for your review, if you should approve this budget, just I wanted to point out that we'll file a budget with the State Board of Education. One of the forms that we'll file that is administrative cost worksheet. And this shows the estimated, again, since an audit hasn't been done, estimated actual expenses during last fiscal year administrative costs with proposed budgeted expenses. And based on the budget you've just seen, there would actually be a negative one percent decrease in administrative costs planned this year over last year.
And that's that form? We go above five percent, we gotta have a hearing?
That's correct. In fact, we're negative. So we've been able to realize the cost savings on the administrative line. But those are just cost savings.
Patrick, I got a question. That extra three hundred thousand that showed up in the Ed Fund revenue, that from grants, you're saying?
Primarily, yeah.
And that been secured?
Yeah. Numbers I didn't have in August. Which is typical of the timing of awards can be saved for in federal numbers.
Is it a grant we get every year?
Any other questions?
If you give me another month, you're gonna make it even better.
I will do everything I can. I'm trying.
That's not gonna get prettier.
Year to year.
It's gonna be tougher and tougher.
Because that state numbers.
No, I'm afraid the state number's not gonna balance out anytime soon.
Right, which is why we've looked, we kind of talked about before, that we've looked overall as an administrative team with assistant principals, directors, principals, we've started brainstorming ways, areas that we can cut back. You know, we've already trimmed back quite a bit. We cut a million dollars from the school budgets in terms of supplies and things that were needed, but also that we decided we could cut back on for this fiscal year. But the following fiscal year, we know that there's gonna have to be some more cuts. So we started really brainstorming those. You know, Patrick has now taken some time to put numbers to those and exactly what the cost savings would be. But the goal is always to have a balanced budget. So that's what we're gonna continue to talk about, and continue to bring recommendations forward to you in terms of what else could be cut from our budget. So there will be some tough conversations that we'll have, but we know that it's for the best of the district to look for a balanced budget.
I want to stress that from my point of view, that the tough conversation is driven mostly, almost solely by the state, loss of state funding.
Absolutely.
And we all appreciate the local support we get for our school district. It's that state funding piece that's just, that is not, obviously, it's not just our school.
Absolutely. It's a statewide issue. And, you know, we're hearing from lots of other districts that are similarly positioned that, you know, they're just trying to tighten as much as they can without affecting students. You know, that's our primary goal, is to not affect students directly. And, you know, it's a conversation all districts are having at this point.
As we move forward with this, for next year's budget, looking at that, as we start planning as soon as possible for next year's budget, take a look at that, is that the administration is going to take a look at other ways that we can save based on whatever that number is, at five fifty-one for this year, but whatever that number is projected to be for next year, as to where we might be able to save some additional money. What is it, eighty percent is in the education fund, is that somewhere in that?
Very typical that eighty-eight, five percent can be.
It's always a benefit. So it's a lot harder to pull that gap when eighty percent of your money, your expenses is in the low category.
Do we have any other grants that we have applied for that we do not get noticed as?
I'm gonna, at this time, say no.
No, you know, you've included your maintenance grant and.
Correct. It's a matching fund, right?
Right. Our federal grants we've included, so.
Correct. At this point, everything I'm aware of, we've accounted for.
The other number on there that concerns me a little bit is the capital projects. The one point three million dollar expense with twenty-one hundred dollars of revenue, leaving a balance of sixty-one thousand. Obviously, if we have additional capital projects fiscal year fourteen, there's no money there. It doesn't look like there's a lot of revenue.
Well, and remember, capital projects is a line that we either pay sole bonds for, because we have some dollars that are still earmarked strictly for capital projects. Other dollars were those that we would have transferred out of, say, the Ed Fund to cover expenses planned, expenses in those capital projects. So this was to pay off and finish off any of those. And where we see a little reserves is to some planned projects as needed throughout the district throughout the year.
So it wouldn't be unusual to have a low balance like that, is what you're saying?
No, because at any point in time.
When it goes in there, it's spent.
It's spent on specific projects. So at any point in time, we could transfer money from another fund as allowed into that to cover project. Or if you had sold that bonds, for example, if the referendum, for example, were to go through, then the bonds would be for that fund of those types of projects.
So we just expect that to spend down as satisfying.
Absolutely. And it's not about, it's not a fund that you would normally keep a running balance in unless you had ongoing projects that you had previously secured funding for, so.
Is fire prevention similar to that?
Correct. There are funds that are directly specific to life safety projects. And so part of our levy, we can request some funds every year annually through the levy. The primary source of that fund usually had come typically in the district through bond sales to pay off specific health life safety projects.
You're showing an increase in working cash fund as well?
Correct. We always, again, through the levy, through the annual levy process, will always request a little money in there. That's to bump that up as much as you can throughout the years. That's the, that's your piggy bank, if you will. It's your emergency fund that can be transferred out to your Ed Fund, for example, and then from there to others if needed to cover specific emergency type projects. Sort of your savings account, if you will.
Any questions? So anybody in the audience who would like to ask a question on the budget process here? The budget says they, as we're presenting this evening. Thank you. And Karen, any other comments?
Patrick, good night's job of coming up. Like I said, it's a work in progress because we know that that's the goal, and, you know, we're very happy to hear that that's your goal for us, is to have a balanced budget, prepare a balanced budget. So, you know, we continue to try to find ways that we can trim. And a lot of those, you know, have to be done over time because we know that any positions that are ripped or any conversations in terms of majority of our budget being in the Ed Fund and salaries and benefits, we know that we have to have those conversations now for the spring. So we're definitely involved in those conversations at this point, and our recommendations as we get them.
Thank you, Karen. No other questions, comments by the board? Motion then to close our budget hearing this evening. So move. Rick, the second move. Allison, thank you, Jennifer. Betsy, call her open.
Harley?
Yes.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Nusis?
Yes.
Next item we have then is a motion then to approve the resolution as presented this evening that would approve this two thousand, this FY two thousand thirteen budget as presented this evening. And that budget would be submitted to the State Board of Education. Motion to approve that.
I move.
Thank you. And secondly, Jennifer, awesome, okay? And Betsy, call her open.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Nusis?
Yes.
Right onward to communications. First, we'll go through the good news, Karen.
The first is in regards to a team writer that we have, that Jill or Chris, you guys wanna introduce?
Sure.
You have second. No, you have second. You have something else you're gonna write.
I was all busy back there.
You're busy, huh?
Interrupted again. Some of you may have seen the article a couple weeks ago about the author we have in the district, one of our very own, freshman Sarah Nessler. Asked Sarah to come tonight and be recognized for her novel.
Stand out. Stand out, so we can get pictures.
Novel How to Be a God, yeah, there's paper out there.
You want to say, by the way.
I believe, Sarah, you had a book signing at Starbucks or something?
Yeah.
So amazing work for the young lady and truly deserves recognition that she's getting. We want to recognize her and appreciate her for her efforts and I can just say.
Absolutely. It's like you.
I just wanted to say, Middle School has invited her, not this week, but next week during their book fair. She's going to be missing a day of school because we're calling her to go to Middle School to.
Wonderful.
Do book signings at their book fair for the day.
The day after my birthday.
And do we have a copy of her book in our library?
The high school library, she ordered one.
And how about the chat?
Chat and library have one.
Thanks.
And it is available as a double paperback or as an E P book reader, it can be used on Kindles or books or.
Can you tell she's my publicist?
Well, we're very proud of you, Sarah. Thank you.
Roger.
And we know that you've been inspired by Mrs. Levender.
And. And. And her mom.
Very good. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Moving on to Mr. Baker or Mr. Lee, I should just have you stay up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Your students are doing amazing things.
These folks are not here. Every year we have many, many students that through their testing on a national basis get recognized for their level of achievement academically. And the National Merit Scholarship Association has several levels of what we've recognized. You may have, you may have heard me at graduation read the different levels that we have, and we're doing quite well this year with some of our students. We have five National Merit semifinalists who will continue, their work will continue to go on, and hopefully they'll make a scholar. But Jennifer Chow, she calls herself Matt, so I'm going Matt Lee. Yufi May, Ashara Pastora, and Zach St. Clair have all been named semifinalists. And again, they could go further with their achievements and be recognized even as a scholar finalist. And just today, we got word, we had a lot of students that are entered in that, and some of them get to go further like these five are. We had three others that were recognized. They don't go quite this far, but the National Merit Scholarship Association just sent their names to us today, and they are Sarah Hadidi, Kelsey Lee, and Zoe Kester. We're also recognized, and we're gonna try to get a picture with them tomorrow with Mr. Pritchett when he comes in and get them declared as well. But again, some outstanding young scholars. At the very least, you're looking at kids that are ranked in the top thirty-four thousand kids in scoring on these tests in the nation. And that's pretty impressive, and we have five that are still moving on. So speak very well of our kids, our parents, our community, and our teachers as well. So we're very proud of them, and you'll see three more in the paper coming through.
It was fun to see that, you know, in the paper, that we have twelve various students, and five of them were ours.
Five of them.
So it's very, very proud of them for all of them. Thank you. Dr. Cox?
On behalf of the students and staff at Glenwood Middle School, we're very excited to have a C recognition from the Alliance for Healthy Generation as a bronze level award. We've been working and all year, last year and then reported to this organization on seven different areas, wellness policies and systems, school meals, health education, competitive foods and beverages, employee wealth, wellness, physical education, and student wellness. And through the activities that we've done and the improvements that we've made at the middle school, we are receiving this. And Beverly Rios, who's been heading up our wellness team, will be, has the honor of traveling to Arkansas in October to receive our award from the Alliance for Healthier Generation, which two of their main sponsors are the Clinton Foundation and their association. So we're very excited about that. Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll do six-four. Mrs. Weitzel's not able to be here with us tonight, but she is being awarded, recognized as a, always Association of School Boards, as a master board member. We have a board meeting presented at the dinner next month, Dr. LaForte in Lincoln. And the master board member award is awarded at, very few board members across the state are awarded on a yearly basis. It shows her dedication and her desire to make sure that she gets the training and takes the courses through the I S, and provides with the information to better do our, for us to better do our jobs up here at the board. I'm seeing that. She's, hopefully, we'll congratulate her next time we see her. She's sorry, she couldn't be here tonight, but that meeting will be October fourth. Thanks for the.
Congratulations her informally, but we're there today. The next, we have a special guest with us, Colleen Stone, and she is the chief executive officer of the American Red Cross, the Illinois chapter, capital area chapter. And we are enthralled to be able to present her with a check of some funds that were raised by our staff and our students on September eleventh. We thought that it would be a nice day to remember those that lost their lives on September eleventh, and except for quite some time ago, eleven years ago. And we wanted to make sure that we remembered it in a positive way, and so we thought, what better way than to donate funds to the American Red Cross? So this is from our staff and students, and we'd like to present Ms. Colleen Stone with a check for one thousand two hundred and eight dollars and eighty-three cents. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Please welcome.
September eleventh tells us to always be prepared, and I appreciate the partnership with the school district as we're preparing our children for disasters. Thank you very much.
On a side note, Colleen is preparing some preparation materials for our students as well, some training for our students as well, and how to be prepared in her school system. She's been a great partner for us, so thank her for all of that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Colleen. Mr. Nusis?
Next item we have is, it's called a no text onboard pledge day. Pledge day was actually the nineteenth of September. My wife and I, it's an initiative by, done by AT&T, that the last words of anybody should not be what's contained in the text message. There's been a number of, people have been badly injured and have lost their life because the last thing they did was text a message. I've been working with Mr. Lee on getting that out. We tried to do it a couple weeks ago, but that didn't work, so we're gonna have a presentation to each and every student at Glenwood High School on October twenty-third, it's the twenty-third. It's a SIF day. So we'll meet with each class and make that presentation. My wife, who is a current AT&T employee, and I'm a retired AT&T employee, will be both opening that presentation. And I think we may have some of the Illinois State Police who's gonna help us that day with it. So it's an important, important message to get across to the kids. And we could have just done juniors and seniors because those are the kids that are out there driving and the most susceptible to that. But we wanted to hit everybody at the high school because, put a little pressure on their friends and their acquaintances while they're in the car with them, that that shouldn't be happening. So hopefully it'll be a good day for the kids, and I look forward to doing it. There is a U2 up here that, U2 link that, if you want to go take a look at that, it's a very powerful message about it. In fact, there's some, there was a state trooper that's on there who was the first one to come upon an incident that happened where a high school child was killed in an accident like that. It's really, it's really something that you want to get your kids to think about, and want to make sure that, that every time they get in the car. There's also gonna be an app out there for, we're all into apps these days, but in time, I think it's on the, it's not on iPhone yet, but it will be in a time, whatever the other one is.
Android.
Or.
Android.
Yeah, Android, yes. And it's a, it's an app that you can, in the car, you hit that app, it disables your message, your instant messaging coming into that phone. When you get out of the car, you hit that app, and it automatically transmits an instant messages they're coming back to you. So it's a good thing to do. So for information on October twenty-third.
On behalf of the district, we thank you and Becky also for, you know, sending a strong message to students because we know it's too, you know, it's too easy to be tempted that, especially when they're used to texting all day long, every day, sorry for them, to remember the importance of putting it aside. So we, you know, thank you because it's most likely to save lives, so thank you for the time that you're committing to it.
You're welcome to come on the twenty-third and see the presentation if you'd like to.
Very nice. We're doing that.
Last item we have is an opportunity for visitors to address the school board concerning any agenda topics. Does anybody wishes to go to the board tonight? Okay, thank you. Next item we have is consent agenda. Is there anybody who wishes to pull anything out of the consent agenda for individual consideration? If not, then the motion to approve the consent agenda is presented in your board package this evening, that's items seven, one through seven, eight. Okay, thank you, Steve. And a second please. Awesome. Thank you, Jennifer. And call her open please.
Yes, Carter. Yes. Pop?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Quater?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
And Nusis?
Yes.
Next item is personnel consent agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to pull anything for individual consideration, items eight one through eight thirty? If not, then the motion to approve our personnel consent agenda as presented in your board package this evening. Everybody, John, thank you. And a second please.
Second.
Thank you. Call her open.
Pop?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Quater?
Hi.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Nusis?
Yes.
We're gonna do finances.
I have a question, do you want to say anything special permission? The next two items, and we'll take, we'll deal with them individually, but the next two items are in regards to, should the referendum successfully go through in November, we have consultants that we use as a district. And the first is PMA, and we. two items are in regards to, should the referendum successfully go through in November, we have consultants that we use as a district. And the first is PMA, and we have, as well, we have Stifel Nickels, who are bond underwriters' financial advisors. So we'll handle them separately in action items, but these are, should, like I said, should the referendum be successful in November, then we would use them for our bond underwriting as well as our financial advice. And they've been very supportive to this point even, in volunteering their time and services to make sure that we have the background that we needed to, you know, put everything in place. So they're wonderful to work with, both have incredible, we've used them before, both have wonderful reputations in this area, so we're very pleased to be able to recommend that.
I think you just answered my question, but I was gonna ask, the reason you do this before the bonds go out, but that's.
Much of the.
The reason is that it helps you logistically with.
Exactly, exactly.
Identifying exactly how it's important.
Right, and, and the goal would be to immediately, as soon as, as soon as the referendum is successful, to be able to immediately kind of let, you know, go ahead and go out for sale. They've also helped us to, at this point, with our schedules, you know, putting those together, determine, you know, what it would look like scheduling those, those bonds, the sales over the five-year period, and what it would look like to maintain our current tax rate in the area of the bond and interest. And so it was very helpful, like I said, they've been already able to help us with all of that kind of behind-the-scenes work, to get where we, to where we are right now. And we continue to, but it's, yeah, to be able to immediately go right out and make it work.
We wanted to kind of point out, there's two, about extending the tax, the way.
Exactly.
Tax rate the way it is, however extended period of time.
Right.
That would have increased the.
The rate.
The rate.
Correct, correct. Nick got that scheduled for us, that we've shared with the campaign team.
I think that's an important thing to emphasize in that the referendum is for extending the bonds to, in order for us to carry out the construction and life and safety areas that we need to improve in our district.
Any questions? Okay. Now then, the motion then to approve the contract with PMA Securities is presented in your board package this evening. Tom, move. Thank you, Al. A second please. One second, thank you, John. Call it open.
Harley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Newses?
Yes.
And nine dot two is, the motion then to approve the investment banking services with Stifel Nichols as presented in your board package this evening.
I'm going to accept that.
Thank you. Second, thank you. Call it.
Yes, Carter?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
And Newses?
Yes.
Next item we have is instructional. Mrs. Larson?
Well, just giving you an update, kind of to run what we're doing. I want to talk about PDIS in the district. And right now, and I want to, let me jump back, cause it began earlier in support, so this is really just a way that the US Department then came up with PDIS and its research base to give schools the capacity to, and give the information, technical assistance for identifying, adapting, having a school-wide disciplinary practices. Our schools are at different levels, K8's a lot farther than the high school, the high school has just started. TME's building a GES because the reconfiguration of staff, we've had to, they're coming along. And so we're really at different spots. They all have universal and secondary teams, we have internal coaches that meet monthly. It's very proactive, and we teach expectations by doing boot camp at the beginning of the year, teaching expectation on, you know, what do you do when you go to the bathroom? What do you do when you're on the bus? What do you do when you're washing and assembling? So we teach those positive expectations. We also have parents that are involved, and they meet monthly, and they focus on the PDIS parent involvement goals of increasing that parent knowledge, communication, and volunteering. Then we've also, this, between Pierre and Larry and Trish Link, they've also reached out and with Betsy's support, and done a community outreach with the Chamber of Commerce. And they're working with the Chadwick Chamber of Commerce for displaying that PDIS, PDIS expectations of be respectful, be responsible, and be safe. And so there's additional trainings, the trainings are very low cost. We have an external coach coming, the technical assistance person will be coming into the district from Chicago this Wednesday. And so it's really looking at the data, the discipline data, on what should we do for kids, and what we need to do to best serve them. So it's, it's going very, very well, and the high school has jumped on board, and you know, by the time a lot of these younger students get to the high school, it's all very internal. So that's our hope. So this is just a brief update on PDIS. Universal screening, as you know, we universally screen students in the fall, winter, and spring. I've worked with the interventionists and reading coaches to talk about, and principals, talking about identifying students through the matrix during these test windows. We also, what we did this year, we also developed some protocols on if you have a student with a disability, where they would fall in that matrix, if they were ELL, if they were homeless, if they were retained, and if they're new to the school district. And then we talked about what interventions would take place in the classroom, and what interventions would take place with an interventionist. So all of that was very, very spelled out. We did the same thing with 5-8, 5-8's a little bit different, because they do math too, so it's math and reading interventions as well. So we've done a lot of brainstorming, which then goes right into the problem-solving team. The problem-solving team, K8 meets monthly at the high school, it's a weekly RTI period. And that problem-solving team, if a student is not succeeding, that team of people, and there's several people that sit at that table, have roles. You have a reading coach, you'll have an administrator, you'll have the referring teacher, you'll have an interventionist, reading coach, school psychologist, maybe a social worker, or maybe a counselor. They will all brainstorm on what do we need to do to fit, to better suit the needs of that child, and how to bring them up to grade level. So, and to build that, to build, you know, to bridge that gap, that academic gap. And it could be socially emotional also, where they need extra supports. So those problem-solving teams will start in October, so, but it's been a wonderful experience working with K8 on that, because it takes a while to universally screen every student and take them through a matrix. And then to schedule the interventions, did a phenomenal job of, with their principals, scheduling those, the students who need interventions. So we are rolling. So, and then my last topic is just the administrator evaluation. I told you last month that this has really changed, and there's a ton of documents down there that you can see that's part of that administrator evaluation, and this is all new stuff to all of us. The pre-conferences for the six principals were held last week, and they took between 60 and 90 minutes with each person. And they all have to be done by October 1st. The principals this week are holding their assistant principal pre-conference. And we did a lot of dialogue, it was excellent dialogue, because we have to jointly collaborate on those goals. They have to set two professional practice goals and two student growth goals. And some of the professional practice goals, and I, you know, some of them looked at their climate culture surveys and said, you know, I need to improve this, and so they targeted something that came from their climate culture survey, some did some communication goals, some professional development opportunities, drop-in feedback, instructional feedback, the RTI process, collaboration opportunities, and that, what I need. And those, you know, that was just a broad range of what those professional practice goals were for the principals. The student growth goals were, of course, reading, math, the phonology program, the implementation of that, critical reading, critical math, EPAS, Explorer Plan, ACT, and then common assessments. And so we had a great dialogue on where we want to be. It's kind of scary, because this is all new on setting those goals and percentages and increases, especially on the student growth goal, on both of them, so. And then, the next thing I want to talk about is, it's very interesting, because it's a very formal process now, there are formal and informal observations. I can do as many informal observations, but formal observations, we talked about during our goal-setting, our pre-conference, about what would you like me to come in and see, because I formally have to document, it's like going in and evaluating a teacher. And the formal observations, they chose evaluation cycle, where I would be with them going through the pre-conference, evaluating a teacher to the post-conference, or to the reflection conference, data meetings where they're running, and I get to observe a data meeting, a department coordinator meeting, a problem-solving meeting, curriculum meeting, something during their WPD time, and then giving presentations to the staff. And so we kind of got months in mind in order to make this happen, and do it all the deadlines. And then self-reflection, the principals will, each and assistant principals will have to self-reflect, and that has to be completed by February 1. And then the summative evaluation for all administrators to do March 1st. So, but this, just to kind of keep you in the know on what we have to do, because this is all new. Questions?
I think it's all new for us, too.
It is.
But I do think we, as a board, we have things to catch up to do also, because this is all part of what we want. We want all the goals to be consistent at all levels. So us, as a board, have to be able to do some correction.
Well, and I commend our principals, not only do they have the five teacher evaluation modules they have to complete for the state, they also have, since they're, they will be evaluating their assistant principals, they have another five on top of it, so they have 10, 10 modules to complete, so I commend that, because it's not, you know, very short timeframe.
We're happy to say that all of our administrators have those. So it's not, it's maybe on, and it's just been, across the state, it's been quite a burden, in a short amount of time, so they are.
Thanks, John. Next item we have is new business, is AP group.
Since we've had a short meeting, I think I've pieced out about a two-hour report. I'll keep it to five minutes. So I think we did skip the AP report last year and opened the session, we kind of did a good set. But we got some good things to give the password to. Jill, turn it off.
Betsy can pull it up if you wanted to pull it up.
That's all right.
Please.
Try to stick to the traditional five minutes and answer any questions that you guys have as we go. Of course, tonight, we're gonna talk about the advanced placement opportunities, as well as I've added a new twist, some dual credit information, which I think is important to discuss regarding what our students are taking as they get into junior, senior year at the high school. We believe strongly in our AP curriculum, as we do with all of our curriculum, but specifically with our higher-level students, we want to try to allow them to excel at the highest level possible. That's our current list of AP courses. Obviously, most of them are running, we do have a few with low enrollment and are not, but we do offer south of I-80 probably the most AP offerings that a school would have. At the bottom, I'd like to note biology. We currently don't have AP Biology, we run it as Honors Biology 2, but with the adaptation of the College Board renewing that course, we are going to move next year to have discussions about calling it AP Biology, and we think that's a good opportunity for our students. This is the AP, we get a summary package with pages and graphs and charts. As you can see, the, a little bit challenging to see, but overall, the students who do take the test at Glenwood High School do extremely well. Eighty-five percent of the students that do test, at least last year, scored an average of a three or higher, which is outstanding, and you can see that trend over the last several years, it's been pretty consistent. We were down slightly in the total number of AP students, it was 144, and the year before it was 160, and that kind of got me wondering, well, why did we have fewer kids? And I have some information on that as we go along, but a lot of that deals with the dual credit courses that we offer, and some students are choosing those versus the AP. Both great options, it just depends what the students' interests are as they progress to the next level. Just some comparison data, number of students enrolled in AP classes versus number of tests taken, number of exams administered. Our number of exams was the same, just we had a little bit decrease in the total number of AP students. And obviously, our goal is to continue to get that in a direction of where more kids are taking those classes. An 88%, 144 of the 164 enrolled in an AP class did take a test, which is considered an AP student. It's basic information regarding the number of students that take more than one course. And if you look at class breakdown, the number of students that end up scoring a three or The AP report also provides information on how many students end up taking at least one AP class or test during their career. I think a couple of years ago, we added this piece in the matrix and realized that we do have a large number of students that go through Glenwood High School who end up taking both a class and a test, and we're proud of that. This shows our enrollment versus our actual examinies who take the test. We've got some areas, we've got a lot of students taking the test, and other areas where a portion of them take it, and some, we have a fewer amount that take the test. And it really depends on, we don't mandate it, we don't pay for it per se, and it's really a student option. I know our teachers encourage it, but it's not necessarily a mandate to take that exam. And we get into various bar graphs showing six-year trends of number of students taking tests versus enrollment. I'm not gonna go through each graph, but overall, our numbers show that we do well. Some of our foreign languages, of course, we don't have as many students in those offerings, in the French and in the German, so we haven't run those classes the last few years. Spanish, generally, a high number of students take the exam. Calculus has been really strong. I know it shows, as if it looks like we've had a dip. We really haven't, because we've added calculus BC two years ago. So if you take the total number of students in calculus AB and BC, you've got a huge number. This year, in 2013, I think we've got close to 70 taking some form of calculus, whether it's AB or BC, and that's just outstanding. History, we did see somewhat of a decrease. I remember specifically last August, and sometimes students don't do their summer work, so if they come into the August registration process, haven't done their summer work, they can't continue to pursue the AP class. So a lot of them chose to move down to the dual credit opportunity. In computer science, we're still trying to get an increase on test takers in that particular AP Biology, or Honors Bio 2, we did have 33 students take the exam, average through 2007 to 2012. We try to have quote-unquote a PR campaign to encourage students to sign up and take the classes. When counselors go into classrooms to sign up, we let them know, hey, we encourage you to take rigorous courses. When the test comes around in May, I email every single parent a letter. We have meetings with the students to try and encourage them to take the exam, but obviously that's a personal choice. We continue to have a high number of scholars, whether it's a regular scholar, or scholar with honors distinction, and so on, we continue to have high percentages in those areas. This graph, or this chart, is always a year removed, so they're not gonna have the 2012 data yet, but as you can see, last year, we were not in the green in this area, which shows that you have over 30% of the students taking an exam, and we were. shows that you have over 30% of the students taking an exam and we were back in that area. Now, next year, being a year removed, it's hard to set. But obviously, we always want to strive that over 30% of our student body at the senior level is taking an AP course. I just think that, we think that is a strong, sends a strong message to students, parents, and teachers.
Can you go back to that?
Yes, sir.
So in the red there, if I'm reading it right, it's kind of hard to read it. Red is less than 1% of the students that take it in those school districts?
Correct. In fact, they may have very few if any. If they don't offer a course, sometimes a student can go to another class or another school to take the test or they could do an online. You know, that's one of the reasons why when we rank or when we are ranked as far as school districts or high schools in Illinois, our AP numbers help to support that along with test scores for PSAE and ACT. Of course, we're not just about test scores. We're about learning for all students, but obviously, this is a big component as to, as to what we do. Dual credit, I believe this was probably started 2006, 2007, before I entered the high school, probably at the middle school at that time. But dual credit's a great opportunity for students. It's currently offered with Lincolnland. It becomes an official transcript. There's no cost to the student and no cost to the school. So really, a student could take a dual credit course and whether they transfer it to Lincolnland or another college or university, it's more or less opportunity to jump into college with credit already in hand, potentially saving a student and a parent thousands of dollars. I'll get to a couple of charts later showing exactly how much a student could save. You know, we have a U.S. history at the 11th grade, novels and rhetoric, which is a senior level class, speech class, we generally offer every other year, and a variety of business and computer courses, which are becoming more popular. You know, the data shows that students who are taking dual credit and AP are much more able to adapt to that college rigor, and it's also a great reduction in cost for students and help, or for parents and students and helps to prepare them as they take the next step. Just some data, I kind of looked at, well, are we seeing different trends with AP versus dual credit? And I did have the 2013 projections, which are the data points. As you can see, we've got some areas where students are starting to jump on the dual Dual credit speech, some of those with the speech, we didn't, we usually run that course every other year, so that's why you see some zeros at the bottom. And the AP language is generally done at the junior level. You could take them both, but just an opportunity to kind of look at what students are taking. Dual credit, history versus AP, of course, this year, we do have more dual credit. Last year, it was right, kind of in the middle. Actually, it was equivalent. And these are just some dual credit offerings regarding business and computer classes. Just kind of showing various trends. Talked to Ms. Van Alstine today and asked if there were any specific questions to be prepared. She said, well, why'd you put this graph in there? And I said, well, I was trying to perhaps make a comparison with the dual credit, with the AP. What kind of savings can you look at? And the story that I'll comment on is we had our senior counselor from last year get an email from a parent and the student took 37 hours at Glenwood with AP and dual credit. And he is already at the sophomore level at his college. And there's a misconception that if you take an AP or dual credit class, especially dual credit, that it may only transfer to Lincolnland. Well, it will transfer all over the place. For example, we asked the University of Chicago and they assured us through their admissions office that it would transfer. So this just shows, for example, even if you go to Lincolnland, you know, the average cost for a three-hour class, you're saving 400 bucks. If you go to Notre Dame or Michigan or Big Ten school, you know, let's say you took 21 hours and when I did the breakdowns and divided the credits, it could end up being huge savings for parents and for students. Whether our students take dual credit or AP, obviously, we try to put them in a position that's best for them in their future. You know, we don't force students to take a certain class. We encourage, try to work with parents, with teachers, with recommendations, and we will continue to do that at high school. Questions?
Okay, I'll give you a kudos for the, especially the dual credit stuff. I think that's important. I think they go hand in hand, AP. Although, one concern I have is our AP numbers are really kind of flat. We don't seem to be, because from my own point of view, I'd ask you, how many of our kids go to college after they graduate here as a percent of the class?
It's in the high, in the high miles, probably more than that. I have to get the exact number.
And I would argue that every one of those kids should come out with at least one AP or college-level credit by us as in high school. And if you think about it, the next year, you're going to go to college and be asked to take four or five college-level classes. What couldn't be better training than then when you're in high school to take four high school-level classes and one college-level class so you know what's really involved? And I speak from my own personal experience. My kids, through, they had done a fair amount of the AP classes in high school, and they were not overwhelmed at the pace of the college level, whereas I think in a student, if you not, doesn't necessarily get that pace, because it's about the pace of the material. I don't know that freshman year at college is that much more difficult because some of the hard classes you take in high school, but the college-level class and just haste is going so much more.
I guess it would depend where the student went. Of course, the student's at the zoo or Illinois or University of Chicago, you're going to see different rigor at different universities. And in turn, sometimes we, we don't have students who end up at college. They may end up in the military or they may end up going to a tax school. I agree that the more we can prepare our students, whether it's an AP or a dual credit, the better off they're going to be with wherever they go. It comes down to ACT's philosophy, college and workforce ready, college and career ready. I'm actually working on taking some superintendent courses currently. One of the projects, I've kind of worked with Jill and Carrie, I'm doing a PDSA, plan a new study act on this very topic. And I've got some fishbowl diagrams and different things, looking at the various components with students, with teachers, with our system itself, whether it's prerequisites or the way our coursebook is set up. Because you literally have to make these decisions if you're going to get to certain AP classes in fourth and fifth grade, sixth grade. And I've got a sixth grader currently, and we found that out, you know, that you've got to know exactly what you're going to do early on in order to get there. So we will continue to look at the data, evaluate it, work with our teachers, work with district office administration in our building to try to continue to get more of our students taking those classes. Until we mandate it, meaning until we require all students to take an AP class, you know, we may see this, we may see trends that go up and down. Definitely a great point to have more involved with AP and dual credit. Thank you. Okay. Next item we have is communications. Discussion about, I think, discussion about our board retreat.
We'll start since our super important member isn't here, the people who helped us organize this week. We had a, we had a first of one of what we hope to be an annual kind of board self-evaluation retreat where we, under the, under the guidance of representative from the Illinois State Board, Illinois Association, School Board Association representative to help us to kind of decide how productive we are as a school board, if we're doing our job pretty much. And this is a part of our, of our district review and even superintendent kind of annual review as we try to struggle with the same goal setting for a superintendent that, that our principals and our administrators are having to set for themselves. And I think our board would like to see kind of a consistent, a consistency in that. And as part of that, as part of that whole process, we've envisioned a dashboard kind of piece and the committee of ours that's been working on the dashboard, just kind of getting into it, but struggling a little bit with how does that fit together and how do we keep it consistent with everything else the district is doing? So Larry Dirks, who was representative from the State School Board Association, came in and kind of helped us do kind of a self-examination of where we think we're doing well. And one of the most interesting slides he had for us was this slide here in terms of talking about responsibility, just overseeing that the board is, is responsible for making sure that we've got our values and beliefs and our mission statement, our vision statement are all up to date and that we as a board kind of stay up on the upper level of that and leave to the superintendent and to the different administrators' responsibilities for the other goals. And I think what Larry helped us discover is that maybe, maybe we've got a kind of a weak area right there in the middle and we, that we as a board have not kind of turned our mission and our vision statement and through the help of community and what kind of really articulated the district goals that we're, that we're, especially as our, as in our current strategic plan, our strategic objectives have all kind of been met, at least in terms of kind of checking them off the plan. We're kind of left at a point where we, we maybe need to consider or think about articulating the district goal so we can connect all the dots and keep everything aligned. And that's my take.
It was really kind of a aha moment. It was like, well, yeah, that's exactly right. We don't have the district goals stated in a goal-type format than that we can include the indicators of that goal. And it was, it was really very eye-opening that it would give us a good direction of where to go. The goals would probably stay the same, but what we would do for indicators of whether we accomplish the goal would vary from here to there. It seemed like a very, very good structure for us to use.
It was, oh, yeah. Because we have all the strategic goals or strategic initiatives, objectives that we had have been basically are there, so we have to move on to the next set of goal indicators.
I thought it was really important that we saw that all the pieces are there, the dots are connected, and we need to do a better job of connecting the dots, refreshing annually. And that offers a good opportunity for the board to have a continuum of goals and planning when new individuals take their seats and have an idea of what's expected, what's going to happen before we move toward the big objectives.
That was a good evening. We hadn't done this in a while, so it was kind of to do, especially with our new member, our teammate, so that we all kind of know what, what to expect from each other and what we should be going with.
Well, then I guess my follow-up question would be, so then what is our next step? Where should we go from here? Because again, the whole idea is to have district goals that are aligned and consistent with Carrie's goals as superintendent that would align with the goals that these people will be building into their administrative evaluations. Eventually, the teachers would have in their kind of build up, everything kind of makes sense from the district point of view. So I'd ask Carrie, where do you think we should go next with this to help?
Yeah, I mean, we had some really good conversation, I thought, that night about, you know, getting community input and how we might do that, reaching out to our community to, you know, have conversations about our district overarching goals and what those are. You know, and I think that's, that's an area that we would really, it would really help us, like you said, in defining our goals as administrators and then defining how the dashboard, you know, what types of information is presented on the dashboard to know specifically what the goals are. So it's a, you know, our next step is to determine how involved, you know, we become and set some dates for the report.
It's going to be a process in getting there and trying to pull our educational objectives and building objectives and, you know, some of the other things that we've got where we want to be in a year, in five years, potentially 10 years now, and put those down. And then come up with a route to get there, a means to get there.
Do we set this up as kind of a policy item in our next board meeting? And where do we, where do we go about taking the next step? Or do we, or do we work with the I S B, Larry?
I mean, Larry's got so much experience and he brought us to those aha moments, you know, what was missing. And, you know, that's what I would think is that it would be really good to tap into his expertise in defining, especially when he said, you know, defining a student achievement goal or defining, you know, those specific areas and saying, you know, what is our goal that in each of these specific areas? What is our physical goal? What is our, you know, student achievement goal? And having those all kind of spelled out, it would be really, I think it would be very helpful to have Larry guide us through that.
And part of our conversation, I think, was we really don't need to wait until board elections to determine who's going to be seated on the board next because it's something that is going to be carried on from one, just continuation of our board. So it's something that I think we could start right away.
It should be transparent from one board to the next. If it's good for students, it'll be good this year, or it'll be good next year, it'll be good five years from now. And that's what, what we're going to touch. I agree with you.
Can you check with Larry to see what timeframe he would have in mind?
Sure.
Because I think I know what John was thinking of. If we don't have the plan, it won't happen.
If we're going to have some kind of idea of where we're going, then I know we're going to come back in the next board meeting and say, well, how much further? Because in part, and part of the thing for our, kind of our committee that's working on the dashboard, we can't really work through that or it can't take a useful metric if it's not lined up with what we really expect out of Carrie and what we really expect out of the, out of all these other evaluations that we are becoming performance-based. I mean, they really should all be about the same thing.
I'll talk to Larry.
It helps us too in our conversations about prioritizing potential cuts in the future.
All right, that's your on the financial side, certainly.
Prioritize, yep. What, you know, balancing what do we do in light of cuts, you know, looking at where the priorities are helps us a lot too when we get into potential cuts.
Okay. Thank you. Next item we have is opportunity for visitors to address school margins from any topic that anybody wishes to address in the board tonight.
I just have one question. What is the dashboard? I guess that is one observation I have is all these terms are used like the dashboard. Well, who knows what the dashboard is? If you're not, so could somebody please tell us what the dashboard is?
A dashboard is a way to look at the indices in the district at a glance. It's like a dashboard on your car. You can see what your speed is, you can see what...
Is that in the management literature or is this a word, term that was made at by who?
This is, John, you want to...
This is part of the National School Board Initiative.
Okay.
The National School Board Association and also the State School Board Association. Some districts call them scorecards, some districts call them snapshots, some districts call them dashboards. It's a, it's basically a way for the, the, the school board to set priorities for the superintendent and at some point for the district to show the public what its true priorities are. And in particular, if you go and look at some of the Chicago school districts, you'll see a number of them have different versions of, again, what they call it, either a scorecard or a dashboard or something.
So have you had a dashboard?
No, we don't have it. We don't have it. We don't have it. We're in the development of this process.
Thank you for calling this one. And the indices are, have been nationally agreed upon, is that correct?
No, no, there aren't.
They're locally.
Okay.
If it's a local school board, I would say it would be, if this is successful, five years from now, the indices on the dashboard that we would monitor as a school would be the same things that would be a part of the superintendent's evaluation year in year, so that her, and her goals for a given year would align with the same indices that the school board is paying most attention to. And the dashboard is a way of simplifying that and putting that up on one place at a time.
Well, is this something where you have to start from ground zero, or can you call upon colleagues who are farther along?
No, and I think, I think we have. And in fact, that's part of the role that the, the School Board Association has. Two years ago, we had a consultant come in working with us to, it, it's something that doesn't exist, you know, in and of itself. It's something that's, that should tie into everything, because it should be a good summary of everything the district is doing in the first place.
There's no template out there, and everybody can plug their own information to and have it magically appear. It's something that has to be developed. Districts, I suppose.
Yeah. Because different districts will have different filings.
Thank you.
Well, in that regard, you know, there's so many different acronyms and, you know, abbreviations that you just, you have no idea what you're talking about. You know, I mean, you all know what these terms mean, but it would be nice to, you know, say, well, the FASB means Financial Accounting Standards Board, you know, so you could sort of get an idea of what those abbreviations mean. That's a very good point, very good observation.
Well, I can tell that to all the educators here. I remember who are not educators, often actually enchanted by all these educators.
And we have to remember that too when we communicate with our public. That's why Betsy's so important to us too, because she reminds us that you can't say, you know, you can't just say the acronyms. Yep, absolutely.
And again, Jill did a great job with that tonight, being PBIS and RTI, that sort of thing, because we do get caught up in-
Explain what it is, yeah.
Okay. If nothing else, questions? Any motion to adjourn? Move. And all favors the House.